We typically do this alphabetically. Can you get the other outside of us with the three-minute introduction and turn with Carol, please?
Well, good morning. First of all, let me thank everyone for being here this morning. I appreciate your efforts in getting up so early in the morning. I have been a resident of Vermont for four years. I'm a business owner for approximately 20 of those years. My husband and I have four children. It's been quite an undertaking. My first year on the council, I presently serve as the vice president of the Republican City Council as well. I've lived in my neighborhood and in my district for over 20 years as well. So I understand the history and the issues within my district, and I committed to my district and my neighborhood and a positive influence in my neighborhood as such a move there. Since the 1980s, there has been quite a bit of work done and accomplished in Vermont, and I realize that we still have quite a bit of work to accomplish in Vermont. And it is not an easy job. I believe that council members should be positive. I believe that they should remain optimistic, and I believe that they should be patient because sometimes change doesn't come as quick as we think it should come. But I am committed, and I'm still in the race because I am committed. I love my cities, and I love my neighborhood, and I am certainly a go-getter. And I believe that I have earned respect from the administration and the city council members as well. And I believe that I am a good candidate for this job and to continue working for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne, Roy, please.
Thank you. Well, thanks, everybody, for showing up this morning, and thank you to the chamber for sponsoring this. Sorry, Mike, you've got to get that fan down. I've lived in the city about 25 years. I've lived in four different locations, and every location I lived in, I lived the area better than I found it. When I first ran for office, and I've been on the council for five years. Been on the council for five years. I first ran for office in District Four and the Gregory Way. And the way I got started in government was, we had a traffic problem on Gregory Way. The vehicles were let out at 4:00 every morning, or maybe afternoon. You'd have just a stream of cars going down this residential street, 25 mile an hour street. So I took it upon myself to communicate with my neighbors, did a traffic count, a traffic study, if you will, suggested some solutions, speed humps, change the parking configuration, slow people down. I took that to the city government engineering, and the city engineer basically dismissed it. That's where I first got involved in the city government. And that told me that, or suggested that the city government was not interested in what residents wanted and what they were concerned about. So that's how I got started with this. As I said, I've lived here for 25 years. I've been on the city council for five years. I was the chair of the Public Safety and Parks Committee. I was the chair of the Finance Committee. I understand how the city government works. It doesn't work, and that's something we've got to work on. I moved into the new District Six, which is a new district. Half of the district wasn't District Six before the reorganization that the voters decided on reducing the council. So it is a new district. That's what we have to understand. I'm a new force in the district. I've been here for less than a year, and already I've made some changes around where I live. Unfortunately, we've had problems with some of the neighbors who have just raised heck in this neighborhood. And we ask ourselves, why people don't want to stay in Vermont? People who are productive? It's because, one reason is because some of our neighbors choose to raise heck and just disrupt neighborhoods. And I want to change that. It's interesting that someone can live in an area for so long and not make any changes until you're actually in a position to make those changes, but then not seize the opportunity to do that. But we're going to talk more about that. So I'm going to tell you, I'm going to pledge something to you. Four things. I pledge to improve and defend the quality of life for our residents, number one. I pledge to enhance the business climate. I pledge to control the cost of government. And I pledge to champion open, accountable, and effective governance. Thank you.
All right, very good. So let us begin. We'll jump into the questions and just get you started on the feel for what it is. I have one minute to respond. We started with Dave. So Roy, you get the first question. And the question actually is personal, and I've seen from an audience member since I've been doing this. So I want to share it with you all. And the question simply is, why do you want to be re-elected understanding the personal toll this has on your personal life? I think it's a valid question, please.
Well, of course, I'm challenging the incumbent, but I have been on the council for five years. There is a personal toll, but I think my wife needs to make sure I'm occupied so I don't give myself any trouble. So, but it's a very important position. It's very important that we have leadership in the council to guide our city to a brighter future. We have a lot of issues in the city that we're dealing with and working with the mayor and the council members. We can do that. And the citizens. We've got a group of citizens that have taken upon themselves, spent a lot of time and effort to actually figure out what these issues are, get the facts. And I enjoy having discussions with those individuals. And unfortunately, the government feels threatened by those individuals, and that's really the wrong way to go. That's not right. If our government is threatened by individuals who want to know what's happening, we're in trouble. But I enjoy it. It's rewarding, and improving the quality of life for our citizens is my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like a question you may ask?
No, I understand the question. I find it quite comical to have comments made about what I've done. But I am committed to my district, and I understand. I've been on the council for a year, serving my second year. I understand the stress, and I understand what it takes to be a strong leader. And I don't back away from challenges. I've been coined to be undecided, but I think I deserve the opportunity to be an educated and knowledgeable person before I make a decision. And so my strength is that I bring wisdom. I bring contemplation. I'm not a panic button person, nor do I set fire and expect others to put them out. So I certainly am capable, and more than capable, of doing the job that needs to be done.
Thank you. Fay, actually, the next question goes back to you. So this question is a larger 10,000-foot question. So what are your district's top three priorities, and what are the city's top three priorities? Top three priorities, district and city.
District. My district, Anderson Cove, is at the very top of the list. Gas works, contamination is the second one, and also we are in the process of doing the storm board and the James and Lydian Walker part. There's also, it's just three, I suppose, right? It's for the northern city. It's a sustainable budget. It's road maintenance. It's a multiplicity of things. But basically, responsibility of the council is to oversee policy and budget within the city.
Thank you. Roy?
Same question. Well, top three priorities for, it's interesting because the top three priorities in the district are really the same as the open city overall. Let me go over this. Number one is quality of life, and that encompasses a huge range of issues, from behavior in our neighborhood, speeding traffic, fireworks at all hours and all times of the year, riots, fights in our neighborhoods and our residential sections. So the quality of life, again, how do we keep people who are productive living in Vermont? It's where the city works with the citizens to deal with those issues effectively and quickly. Secondly, infrastructure maintenance. We've got a street grid which is falling apart. We've got right-of-way, which the city is having difficulty maintaining on its own. And then lastly, is financial sustainability. And that encompasses a lot, and encompasses controlling our costs to government, and also it encompasses increasing our revenues through economic development. And folks, our people need jobs. We need living wage jobs so that they have disposable income to support us. The government provides those revenues. So the issues of the district and the city are very much in mesh. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. The next question goes back to you, Roy. So this question, again, staying on the level, is what will you do differently once, if you are elected to the city council? That's it.
Well, I'm going to be consistent. As a council member, the last five years, I've been, leadership is not about what you put on your campaign flyer or what you say in a forum. It's actually what you do. So my record of legislative achievement goes, I think, is unwritten by any other councilman we've ever had in the city. I'm proud to say that. Couldn't do it alone. Of course, the other council members had to help, and the mayor had to sign off on the appropriate line. Thank you, mayor. So I think I'm going to be more focused there. In the short, in the two years of this term, there are some things I want to see done. I want to enhance our business environment, change our business climate, make some changes to the BNO taxes. Want to look at zoning and see what we can do to actually encourage development here in Vermont as opposed to setting up site in Kitzachet County. I also want to work on the quality of life issues. I believe that if you can identify those centers of rabbing where people are causing the most problems, you can eliminate most of your problems by identifying those individuals who are causing it. So I have a plan for doing it. Thank you.
Hathaway, what would you do differently if you are elected to the city council of District Six?
Differently? I don't know if I would do it differently. I think I would work a whole lot harder and a whole lot smarter when it comes to policy and budget and those issues. I do want to work on some major issues that are within the city, such as the needles in the park issue. I would like to work on that. I would like to work on how we support and keep our parks in good shape. I would like to work on how we can maintain a budget that we don't have to lose time for these and make Vermont a better place and make Vermont the place that it should be. So I would certainly not want to do anything different than I'm already doing, so that I, I am doing it a whole lot more efficiently and massively. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, actually, in your last response, you hit upon a question that just came up, and that is a consistent question that's been asked by this audience, actually, at almost every exit issue. And this one simply is, how can the city council address the issue of improperly disposed syringes? The question goes to you.
I think that the mayor is meeting with the health department and having discussions. I think that the needle exchange program is certainly one that we can consider. I think that it's probably not to benefit of neighborhoods to have these needle exchanges in the neighborhoods. Maybe we should look at zoning for that as well. And if it is a legitimate business, I think they should be licensed. And so those are some things that we can consider along with whatever the mayor and the health department bring forward. We'll certainly be looking at needle exchange versus just hand and allow as one of the options.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the question. It is a big problem. We have a major opiate and heroin addiction problem in Kitsap County in the city. We liberated Afghanistan. Well, in a sense, we liberated the cities. And we've opened the floodgates to a huge amount of heroin, very inexpensive heroin, to Western Europe and North America. We're seeing that right now. How would we deal with the problem of improperly disposed syringes? Three things. Number one, the city council passes a resolution calling for the Board of Health or the Health District to adopt a one-for-one needle exchange, not an estimated needle exchange, not where a pound of filled needles are exchanged for a pound of empty needles, but a one-for-one with very tight regulatory control. Number two, establish zoning. Where should needle exchanges be in our city? Should they be in residences? Should they be near schools? Should they be near parks? Maybe not a good idea, but establish zoning regulations for needle exchanges. And number three, business licensing. You know, one can argue that there is an impact on those locations. You have traffic. You have foot traffic. You have vehicle traffic. So that would suggest that there should be business licensing for these needle exchanges. Thank you.
So now let's get back into the weeds on some of the real specific questions. And these are questions that have come up from audience members from previous candidate conversations. Starting with, do you support getting a grocery store in downtown Bremerton? How would you go about it?
That's for me, Joe. You know, since revitalization began, there's been a lot of talk about getting a grocery store or other retail shops in the downtown. Anybody who's run a business knows that you can't have a business without having a demographic. You have to have people able and willing to shop for your goods or service. So it's a chicken and egg problem. The problem is how to increase density in the downtown area that will support a grocery store. The short answer is, yes, I support getting a grocery store, but how can government make that happen? We can't force a company to locate a grocery store in downtown Vermont. But we can establish the conditions to increase density, to make it easier, and lower the barriers to companies moving into an area. That's what government should be doing. We cannot mandate a company move into downtown Vermont. But increasing density, looking at regulations, ensuring that logistically a store can be supported, these are some of the things that government can do.
Same question.
Well, man, this is hard. I understand that they're doing business to make money. And certainly, if that's something that we want, we have to have the customers and customer base to support that. I believe, and I have firsthand knowledge, that we have been working, the city has been working toward getting a grocery store downtown. This is not an issue that has just come up. It's been worked on quite a few times. And for whatever reason, those, it hasn't come to fruition, but we certainly ought to be working continuously to make sure that that happens. And bottom line is, it's got to be a problem. Otherwise, why be in business? And so that's one of the things that we need to consider. Do we have a couple of things in downtown at this point to support a grocery store? And businesses, look at that. That's number one.
Thank you. So staying again now in the weeds, those real specific questions from your constituents here, from the audience members. Question is to you, Fay. Do you support reinstating the ad hoc parking committee? Why or why not?
Ad hoc? Do I support it?
Yes, and why or why not?
You know, I think that the parking issue is a little wrong, and it has been for many, many, many years. And whether or not we have a parking committee or we have an ad hoc parking committee, I really don't think it's that big of a deal because we have citizens that have championed quite a few major issues within our city. And so to, you know, make a decision whether ad hoc or whether it's done throughout the council, council gets to look at those things across the table all the time. So I don't think it's necessarily who does. I think whoever feels that they have the passion and the drive to get it done, that'll get it done, as long as it's done. That's my focus, as long as it's done.
Thank you. Roy, same question. Well, it sounds like ad hoc government. Well, if someone is interested in dealing with the issue, it'll get done. Well, that's, that's not leadership, though. I have to tell you, I was the chair of the ad hoc parking committee for the city council. It was two council members and seven members of the community, business owners, private residents, who spent their time and really put a lot of thought into parking issues in Vermont. That's a hot button issue. I mean, unless you live in a neighborhood which is historically impacted by parking, you may not see it. Unless you have a business downtown, you may not see it. But it's important, folks. I believe in restoring the ad hoc parking committee as a standing committee that will be taken seriously by the city council and will input into the city council in determination of policy and parking issues, and also look at impark's performance. I think there's a lot to be looked at with impark or parking contractors. So I think the ad hoc parking committee would be the perfect vehicle, and ad hoc government doesn't work. We need a standing committee of residents and city council members to deal with it. Thank you.
And again, a real specific question. Stay with you, Roy. The question is, do you support passage of a charter amendment allowing the city council to have special meetings outside of city limits, and how do you propose citizens will be able to attend?
Now, yeah, this issue's been around for a number of years. The issue right now is in the charter. The charter does not allow the city council to be outside the city limits, have a forum outside the city limits. You have to ask why the citizens would vote to have something like that on our charter. It's about transparency and openness. And it's part of my platform to champion transparency and openness in government. You know, initially, I didn't think that was a problem, but considering the things that have happened, the loss of the ad hoc parking committee, the fact that we're going from nine council members to seven, the fact that, you know, there are efforts, I think, on the Parks Commission to actually reduce transparency because folks are worried about citizens finding out about what's really going on in our park system. I see a dangerous trend. At this point, folks, I would advise you to vote no on allowing the city council to meet outside the city limits. It's not necessary. Let's join the 20th century. Video conferencing has been out there for years. We can video conference with anybody we need. Thank you.
I had my reservations about the council meeting outside of the city. But I thought it was necessary to give the citizens an opportunity to weigh in on that. And it is up to you whether or not you want that to take place. That's why it's on the ballot. I do find that it may be more difficult for some to attend to meetings and to be informed about what goes on in the city, and I think that's very important. I think that's paramount. So I do have my concerns, but my main direction was, I think, the citizens should decide whether or not they want the council to meet outside of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. So then another audience member asked a question. Have you accepted money or endorsements from special interests? And if so, how can the citizens trust you to represent them and not the special interests? Fay?
Special interests? I hear quite a bit about special interests. I, have I received money from special interests? I've received money from quite a few people and organizations. But I understand as a leader that my job is to represent the people, to represent the citizens, to represent my district, to represent the city as a whole. So I'm in nobody's pocket, and I made that very clear, that I'm in nobody's pocket. You can support me or not support me, but I am in nobody's pocket because my job is to deal with the policy and the budget within the city, and to listen to the citizens and to address issues that come up within the city. So the answer is probably yes. And do I intend to let them puppet, make me a puppet? No, I do not.
Thank you. Roy, same question.
Well, yeah, interesting. I mean, the question is, do we need more politicians in office or we actually need elected officials? And that's what is very hard of this question, I think, part of mine. I don't accept money from special interests. I don't accept endorsements from special interests. I've been invited by a number of special interests in our community to come and speak to them. And I know that they'll offer money, you know, if what I say, if they like what I say or I answer the questions appropriately. I refuse to do that. I will be happy to meet with them after I'm back in office. But we've got to be really careful, folks. You know, we're here to represent our citizens. And even folks can say, oh, there's no conflict. I'm not conflicted. Well, if you receive money, there's a quick pro quo. There's, you know, you're doing something, you're receiving something. They expect something in return. At some point, they will ask for that favor. So to keep it clear, I don't accept money from special interests. I don't accept endorsements from special interests. And I don't accept endorsements from politicians. Roy, that's really saying something. Thank you.
And Roy, staying with you. The question is, getting a specific question regarding parks. How do you propose to fund parks so they can absorb the new 9/11 memorials?
Well, thank you. Appreciate the question. It's an issue that I've been struggling with the last five, six, seven years. I got back in the country in 2004 from Europe. I went to the council as a private citizen and said, we built all this infrastructure. Now, what's the plan for funding the operation and maintenance of that infrastructure? And one of the council members who actually is in this room right now, I won't say who it is, did a quick double take at the council present, and they still haven't answered. First year I was in office in 2008, I suggested we take lodging tax money and use some of that for maintaining our downtown facilities. We actually ended up doing that. So I'm not just someone who complains and asks a question. I actually come up with solutions. What I suggest, and the issue of the 9/11 memorial is a recent issue that's come up as far as funding for O&M, which we're still trying to figure out the facts on that. But we think there might be $10,000 in maybe a trust fund for the O&M of that facility. We're not sure. We're looking at that. But a couple of things I suggest, enterprise activities, the Penner Guest Park facility is a heavy turn in the enterprise funds, and also I like to consider consolidation of the Parks Department with public works. It's mostly facilities maintenance, folks. Facilities maintenance is the biggest part in parks' budget. Thank you.
Good question.
Parks is a major, one of the major concerns, maintaining our parks. I believe there is a task force that's been working very hard, coming up with some solutions as it relates to the parking, our parks issue. I look forward to them bringing those ideas forward. And I might add that it was the council that initiated the parks task force because we understand how paramount it is, how important it is. I do believe that we could capitalize more on our volunteer prism. Vermont has a huge volunteer spirit. And I certainly think that that's one of the ways that we can address the park issue. But I'm looking forward to the task force bringing those things forward in the council. Thank you.
And staying with you. The question is, now we move into some business-based questions, such as, what is your plan for improving the business climate in Bremerton?
I think that we can certainly look at zoning. We can certainly look at policies. And I understand that being an old tax is an issue as well. All of those things we need to consider. We also need to consider what time we're here. We're in an economic slump, and there are many businesses that are hurting. One of the things I was thinking about as a business owner, my husband and I just saw from Major Contract to a company in Kent. Well, as normal citizens and as business owners, you can help us by keeping your money in Kitsap. You can certainly help us by keeping your money in Kitsap to help sustain and help our businesses to be able to hire and expand. We need every dollar that we can get to stay in Kitsap.
Thank you. Roy?
Thank you, Joe. Yeah, huge area. As a council member, I worked economic development. The mayor, it was a pleasure. I think the mayor's an energy buddy, so I don't, please take that positively. But there are three things that need to be done. BNO reform, business occupation tax reform. Now, eliminating BNO is completely harmful. It's not a silver bullet. People say it is. But three things I want to do with BNO. Eliminate manufacturing BNO to develop SIA. I want to exempt new businesses for three to five years from actually having to file a BNO tax return. Most of these businesses are just small mom and pops. They're not going to reach the exemption threshold of $100,000 for 2014. Just exempt them from filling out the paperwork, folks. I mean, every piece of paper you look before a small business owner is one more thing that takes them away from their primary business. Let's relieve them of that paperwork burden. Liquid zoning. We have a comprehensive plan update for 2015. I want to accelerate that. Eliminate the center approach, you know, get this developed out here, and strategic economic development. Working with the mayor, I got funding to restore Tequita. I also helped with the Kitsap National Area Center. So, thank you.
So staying on the same lines as far as economic development. The question is, how important is getting the passenger fast ferry restarted? Roy?
Thank you. Well, I was in the fight to maintain the high-street ferries when the Washington State Ferry ran, the two high-street ferries. I was involved in that. I was at city council. I was actually in a debate with some residents of Rich Passage. I was actually in a debate with some residents of Rich Passage. It's kind of funny how politics works and how things, how you meet people later on and you have those discussions, but I think reliable, fast ferry service is essential to our economy. It's not the silver bullet, but it's one thing that will help us. Back in the late 90s, when the high-speed ferries were running, there was an real estate boom here in Burlington. I mean, people were moving to Burlington, working in Seattle, that boom ended. So it's not the silver bullet, but it's essential. What I propose is that the legislature provides some funding, a subsidy if you will, to our passenger ferry, our high-speed passenger ferry, and that combined with maybe a local sales tax increase could enable us to operate that service. Thank you.
Thanks.
How important is this ferry? It's critical for this area. That ferry system must remain healthy and vibrant. And I do believe that the city and the administration and the council, we are connected in that process, and we're working with that process. There are trips that are taken to Olympia to rally our representatives as well. I don't believe that we're just sitting on our laurels. We're actually working on that, and working toward making sure that that stays intact, that it remains healthy and strong and vibrant, because it does allow for a better economic base for the city, having that ferry system up.
Thank you. All right, so this is a real specific question regarding budgeting, I believe. Questions from the audience members, if revenues come in $120,000 higher than expected, would you, A, hire a fireman, B, a policeman, C, summer parks crew, or something else? It's a multiple choice, I believe, but the audience member wants to know what you think is, if we have additional revenues that come in, $120,000 higher than expected, would you hire a fireman, a policeman, summer parks crew, or something else? Question.
About placing my ask on who do I think needs it the most? I think our services, our department and our police department certainly are top of the list, public safety. But, you know, you gain three that are in dire need, we're understaffed, and that's no secret. If I had to pick one, and you know, this is, if I had to pick one, I would probably, I guess I only have a minute. I would probably, I would probably move toward police, because public safety is top. But that doesn't mean I feel any less about the other two.
Thank you.
Well, that's a really great question, and, you know, council approaching the budget discussions, $120,000 in additional revenue, I assume that's into the general fund. You know, we have different funds. The general fund is the operating fund of the city, police, fire, parks, and a lot of other activities that government has to provide for. So police, fire, or parks, summer parks help, or other, I say other, reserves, folks, reserves. The lesson, a hope we learned in this recession was, we need a rainy season fund, not a rainy day fund. And the reason we're looking at laying people off was because of this lack of revenue, because of the loss of sales tax revenue, parking tax revenues were down and capped. So I believe we should build our reserves to 10% of our annual general fund operating budget. And that's the responsible thing to do, folks, especially if we're looking at reducing BNO. We're going to have to build that reserve to account for the next recession that's going to come along. That is the responsible thing to do, that's leadership, and that's looking at the long-term health of our city. Thank you.
Very good. So the next question is, Roy asks to do with operations of the city council. The question from this audience member is, how do you see the city's role in supporting education in Reverton? Do you have ideas for collaboration with the school district?
Well, I know this question about education's come up before. It's not the main purview of the city council, the city government, to address education. We actually have a school district, the Burlington School District, which is variable-funded. Well, we certainly cooperate with the school district. We help the Lincoln College with their plan for their campus. So certainly, we can support the school district where we can, but we have totally different taxing districts. One thing I would really point to is quality of life again, providing good police and fire service, ensuring that residential areas are safe and that people aren't behaving themselves, because if you have disruptive neighborhoods, what kind of quality of life do children have or parents have to prepare their students, their children, for, to learn? So we don't have a direct role because we have different taxing authority, different legislative authority, but certainly cooperate with the school district where we can without obligating the city government for a large additional cost. That's the important thing.
Thank you.
I think it's important. I think as a community, that we need to collaborate, and I think we need to collaborate more. And it's not just about money. It is about a community coming together and unite, unify themselves for common goals for things that we want to see within our city. And education is very important to the economic base and the vitality of the city. So I certainly think that we should be collaborating with all entities to make the city of Burlington a better place together.
Thank you. And actually, that leads to Roy's, the next question, speaking of relationships with outside entities, work with the city council. And this audience member asks, how would you work with the nine state legislators that represent some part of Reverton? So how would you work with the state nine, nine of the state legislators that represent the city? Yes, it goes to you.
President, I'm already working with quite a few of them. I interact with them all the time throughout the city and have conversations. Matter of fact, I endorse, I am endorsed by quite a few of them. And so I am having conversations with those legislators and representatives of government to have, to get an understanding, better understanding of how things work, and to let them know what we're concerned about here in the city of Burlington. So I think it's very important, and I'm already doing that, having conversations and meetings, discussing certain issues that they could help us with on the state level. Thank you.
That's an outstanding question, and it's something I have talked about the last five, six, seven years. Number one, the council has to come up with a solid legislative agenda. We've had council discussions where, oh, by the way, we're meeting with legislators, you know, a day before. Well, that's not quality leadership, folks. The council needs to spend time to establish our legislative agenda, work with the mayor so she understands where we're at, and then have a solid front and provide data, and also emphasize no unfunded mandates. Every time they pass a law or regulation, what is the impact to our city in practical terms? What is the impact to our businesses in practical terms? We also need financial flexibility. We need to emphasize to our legislators that we need financial flexibility so that we can, if necessary, move shift funds to deal with some of the things that come up, the emergencies, and also shore falls in our general fund. Also, fast ferries, we talked a little bit about that. It's important to emphasize to our legislative delegation the importance to our economy and the quality of life of our people, the need for reliable, fast ferry service. And I think they could help us on that. Very important. Thank you.
So this is, again, a larger question now, looking at the city government and operations. And the question from the audience member is, how can city government be made more transparent and accountable to the citizens?
I assume that's from me. Well, I mentioned, I kind of gave you a list of concerns that I have about, what I perceive as declining transparency in our government. We're losing two council districts, we're going to have less representation, and the workload's going to increase. And we need some superstars in the council, folks. We need people to show up for the meetings, prepare, have read the material, be willing to ask tough questions, and hold people accountable. But we want to encourage our citizens to participate on commissions and board with committees. We want to encourage them to ask questions, to seek the information, you know, to keep asking and pounding away until they get the data that they need. Efforts to reduce transparency, you know, eliminating the parking committee, the ad hoc parking committee was a bad move, was anti-transparent, was anti-democratic, and anti-republican, small d, small r. That's a really disturbing trend. Allowing the council to meet outside the city limits, I think, is a move in the wrong direction. It reduces transparency, reduces accessibility to our government, especially by disabled folks who can't go outside the city all over the place. Thank you.
Same question.
I think it's really important for citizens to have input and to have information that is available. The city does have a website, you can make public requests, you can ask for minutes and notes. But getting, being involved in the process is one of the major ways that you can be informed as a citizen. And I do believe in honesty and integrity and transparency. And I think that the administration and the council is concerned about that. And being in those study sessions, you will realize that there are many times that we go to the vet because we want, to have an opportunity to have something vetted or to have an opportunity to have input. So I think we're already focused in on being better transparent.
Thank you. So this question goes to you, Fay, is the, has to do with your personal or your background in legislation, working with the council. Question from the audience member is, what legislation have you sponsored during prior terms to better Reverton? What have you done to better Reverton as far as actions on the council?
I haven't sponsored any legislation.
And that's what my, that's what my.
I haven't sponsored any legislation. As far as helping the city, you know, one council member, unless you have respect, so you can bring whatever you want, bring across the table. But it takes the full council and the administration to get things done. So I haven't done anything by myself, and I don't take credit for anything by myself because I'm not accomplishing anything by myself. So that's my ask.
Thank you. Roy, same question.
Well, yeah, it is difficult, we have nine or seven council members that are going to get, you know, a majority of those folks in line, but starting 2008, the first retreat we held, 2008, I got the council to agree on adopting an energy conservation policy for the city of Burlington. It was the first jurisdiction in Kitsap County, folks. This city was the leader jurisdiction. Energy conservation, we're going to analyze our energy consumption and look at ways we can reduce energy consumption. And by the way, we are continuing to do that, and I'm glad the council's continuing on that path. The next thing we need to look at is reducing our liquid fuel consumption or changing that. Number two, that was in 2008. 2011, I introduced legislation, or tried to get legislation through our committee to legalize the keeping of four chickens. Four chickens, big deal, right? So I worked at that, I worked, tried to get it through the committee, tried to get it through the council, the council didn't respond. The citizens had a threat of citizen ignition. Took eight months to get that on the books. I don't understand it. If this government, if this body represents us, why? And then reducing their salary. So.
I'm sorry, I was interrupting. Thank you. So now, actually, this is a reference check question from one of the audience members. Who would have thought to check references, right? So the question is, you have both served on the city council in the past. It stands to reason that your coworkers on the council know what it's like to work with you. So how, how many of your fellow councilors have endorsed your current campaign, and how would they describe working with you? That goes to Roy.
Well, anybody who really knows me knows how I operate. I do my homework, I'm prepared, I ask tough questions, I hold people accountable. People are intimidated by that. I mean, people are intimidated. My fellow councilmembers have been intimidated by that, but that's okay. I'm not there for them, I'm there to represent our citizens. I don't go along and get along. And just made that clear. So for those people out there who want to be represented and want someone to fight for them, I'm your candidate. I think I'm respected because I do my homework. I know what I'm talking about, I have my facts. And for those who are not prepared, don't have their facts, it's very, very intimidating for them to deal with me in a debate. So that's the kind of person I am. I'm consistent, I will be that way. And that's what we need, folks. We need leadership on the council. Even some of us, you've got to drag them by the nose, and you need to wake up. Thank you.
Same question.
I'm not intimidated by anybody. I stand my own ground. I'm a big girl, I can handle tough questions. I'm endorsed by all of the council. And I do believe that I have earned their respect, as well as the administration's respect. So I think that they would say that I'm a reasonable person, that I contemplate, that I'm compassionate, that I think about people, I'm a people person, I know what a team is, I know that there's no I in the team. I don't take credit for someone else's work. And what they have done, I am a team player. So it's not about me, it's about the team, and it's about all of us together getting jobs done.
Thank you. So getting into some final wrap-up questions, and this goes to you, Fay. Question is, what have been your most significant achievements during your time in office?
Thank you, that's, that's a good question. Probably the first year that I was on council, we were able to minimize the amount of jobs that were lost. We were able to vet the naming of the William and James Walk Park. Let's see, what else? What else? We were able to go through the process of the meth clinic issue that was a very, very hot topic. We were able to meet with the citizens and vet that process through, just off the top of my head, I'm drawing a blank here, but I think most of us know 2011 was a rough year, a rough year. So if you have looked at any of the council previous meetings and broadcasts, you know that there were quite a few issues as a council member that I had to touch and vet for.
Thank you. Roy?
Yeah, well, I already mentioned some of these things. Energy conservation, 2008, 2011, the chicken ordinance, the citizens really had to take the lead because the council wasn't listening. 2012, I led the effort to reduce the mayor's salary. I did an analysis of other jurisdictions similar to ours, and got the council to agree that we were actually compensating our mayor too heavily, so based on our economy. But other things I've done, I actually helped restore funding to our Kitsap Ignite Development Alliance. Previous mayor dropped funding entirely, almost. I got $15,000 restored in the budget. I also worked with the mayor to provide some seed money to the Kitsap Entrepreneurial Center, which is a small business incubator in downtown Burlington. I also provided a little grant, $250,000, to the farmer's market, so that they can start their farmer's market downtown on the boardwalk. So that's been very successful. I really enjoyed doing that, that's economic development. I've been through five budgets, I attended every budget meeting, folks, where we voted on the budget. So five budgets through the toughest recession we've seen since the Great Depression. So that's a huge achievement. Thank you.
And Roy, this question is somewhat a follow-up question for overall, is how can the city improve the quality of life for its residents? Roy?
Well, that's, you know, that's a big part of my platform, that's really the number one issue. I'm going to borrow a phrase from a major U.S. corporate. We're here to provide quality of life services, police protection, fire protection, maintain our infrastructure, our roads, maintain our parks definitely. But the thing I want to look at is, you know, we have people living in our residential neighborhoods who are raising heck, who are just disrupting our neighborhoods. I believe some of those people are receiving public assistance, housing assistance. I think we need to look to see if they are receiving assistance and put maximum pressure on those agencies providing that assistance to have those people live up to a code of conduct in our neighborhoods. I mean, that's one thing we can do. Identify the center of gravity, the tipping point, and push that tipping point so we can achieve those results. I think we could do that very efficiently without adding additional personnel, it's just the way we do government and the way we talk to our fellow agencies. Thank you.
Same question.
Maintain a sustainable budget. Make sure that our services, our public safety, our services that we are accustomed to and deserve stay at the highest level possible. We also need to look at education opportunities within the city, Lincoln College. I'd love to have that four-year college for all types of degrees, and we know that there are end roads toward making that happen. And we know that there are end roads toward making that happen. Our housing stock needs to come up. We have a lot of houses that are below standard. We certainly need to address the perception, the negative perception of the city based on that housing stock. And then, we need opportunities, more opportunities for our young folk, our children, to stay with us here and get there, rather than fly off somewhere else once they get out of high school.
Thank you. So, our final question, and it goes to you, Fay, is simply, this is a common question asked by our audience members. Can you name one nice thing about Joe Ryan?
I'll just say one, right? Nice thing. Mr. Ryan is persistent.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Well, you know, the thing about Fay, she is a business owner. She understands what it takes to run a business. I think that's really, talk about needing persistence, determination, really, you know, toughing things out. I've been a business owner as well, so I really appreciate that. And her ability reveals a strength. And it has to come from deep inside. So, that's really a great thing. We need more than that. We need leadership. We need someone being able to be up and even when you need to be, to connect people.
That's not a question.
I have a very short battery.
So, we're at the conclusion of our question and answer period. Now, the candidates each have two minutes to give you a summary, to share with you any party thoughts or comments they want you to take out the door. So, we start with Fay. For summary, we'll have Roy start us, please, two minutes.
Okay, once again, I want to invite people. What I pledge to you as your future councilmember for District Six, I pledge to improve and defend the quality of life for our residents. And I talked a little bit about how we're going to do that. I pledge to enhance our business climate. And I talked a little bit about why we need to do that. I pledge to control the cost of government, you know. Think about revenue, how can we get more revenue? But we don't really emphasize, I don't think enough, on the council's part, how we can control costs and do things differently, more efficiently. And I pledge to champion open, accountable, transparent, and effective government. And that's really key here, you know. Make sure we get the biggest bang for the buck. I've served on the council for five years, as chair of the finance committee, and as chair of the public safety and parks committee. I've got a lot of experience. I'm persistent. I do my homework, and I hold people accountable. And if that frightens you, don't vote for me. And Mayor, I appreciate you. I'm the only member, person of District Six who can vote for either one of us. So, I appreciate you coming. So, I'm Roy Ryan, your next city council representative for District Six. Thank you.
Thank you. Fay?
I'd just like to say thank you so much for being here today and for getting up early and coming out. I intend, wouldn't really, to continue the job that I've already started. And I think that the city council needs my best. And I think I bring integrity and honesty and transparency to that board. I think I'm a valuable player. And I think in order for this game to be won, if you can call it a game, I need to be one of the starting players. I don't just believe that I'm the best candidate. I know that I'm the best candidate. And my record speaks for itself. It's comical to me to have individuals that don't really understand the impact of what I brought, what my family has brought to this community and does not really understand any of the things that we have championed and supported through my business, through my husband, through my sons and my children. Everybody knows that we are contributors to this community. We have been since we hit the ground. And so, this is not something new to me, to later in the community, to have the love and the respect and the professional attitude and spirit that makes or brings a fine councilwoman. And I am that. And I appreciate you for being here this morning and for your support. Thank you.
All right, so that concludes today's session. I'd like to round out applause for both our candidates.